Good evening, everybody. Hi. It's 6 o'clock, it's the 8th of July, regular town board meeting. Thanks for coming. Would everybody please stand to go ahead? Hi. I'm from the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation. If this will be a justice trial. Chauncey's joining us. He's on a train that's running late, so we're going to start without him. May I have a motion to approve our prior town board minutes from June 10th, 2024, and our special meeting minutes of June 28th, 2024? Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Chad. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes the matter. Thank you. We have two public hearings open tonight. Thanks for coming. After which Frank Mazzarello is going to give a presentation on two improvements we want to make at the park. So I don't know if you want to stay for that. Should be interesting. First, we're going to do workforce housing. Locust Hill continued from June 10th. Is anybody here, would anybody here like to speak regarding this? Come on up. Yes?
My name is Lamarc Fodatz. I live in 14 Rockford Lake in the Village of Rhinebeck. I'm speaking in favor of the development project at Locust Hill. My only personal concern is preserving as many as the large trees that are there as possible. And I think that there's been a tree entomie, so I'm sure that you're aware of that, and I'm sure anybody else is aware of that, but I'm just, I have my concern.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming. Would anybody else like to be heard? Come on up.
John Marcy, 5351 Place. And I have attended some, not all the meetings. And my impression has been very favorable. Mr. Conney struck me as a gentleman and professional who is really sincere about the community and the growing wider neighborhood. And that's one concern that I do have. I'm here to support some of my friends from Wells Manor, but in my speech as well. When you look at the charts, the neighborhood site plan, I'm glad you did it, neighborhood site plan, you really do see proximity between Wells Manor and the construction site. So I'm hoping that maybe, and this is, I think more of an neighbor issue than a municipal issue, I'm hoping Mr. Conney, perhaps you and some of the professionals on your staff can consider just visiting Wells Manor, meet with a couple of the folks there, and walk around and just hear their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? No?
I live one west court in the village. Ryan, I'm at home. I'm a nonprofit membership organization dedicated to fostering a community. It promotes and supports independent living for residents of town. I applaud the Locust Hill Workforce Housing Project. We hope that these affordable living options will increase the number of people who will work in our doctors' offices in the hospital and be available to help those of us for whom help in our homes may help us avoid changing our residents' pens.
Thank you for speaking, and thanks for coming back at home. Would anybody else like to be heard? Please come up.
I'm sorry, can we get better sound some way? I'm right here in front of the microphone.
I think you have to speak right into the microphone. And you're addressing the town board. Thank you. Hi.
Okay, we live at Wells Manor, and we are--
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Okay, Ellen Crystal.
One at a time. We can take one comment at a time.
Well, we're just here together. Thank you. Okay. The thing, we have some really specific concerns, and one of the things is to create a liaison during the construction of some, of few residents in the area so that we can notify the neighbors that live really close to where there will be blasting. And they're saying they're working from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night or 5:00 at night. So we really want to make sure that we have some pre-warning for that kind of thing. And we, I would like to know, the access road, as far as I know, is the actual driveway of Wells Manor on one end, correct?
Correct. Until about the, only the first 100 feet from--
It's the easement area. Is the easement area--
Kenny, how far off? Why am I blinking on the end of the road?
I'm saying 25, 20 to 30 feet.
20 to 30 feet of--
Astor.
Thank you. Sometimes you just forget.
Yeah, the reason somebody had asked me in the inf--
It's the first 30 feet, which this property has an easement for. And then they'll have a separate driveway, but it only goes one way. It only goes north onto Astor. There'll be no traffic coming off Astor.
Right, because that's our only access--
Yes.
--for us. We don't have any other way to get around. And then, so blasting notifications, really want that. And then Karen, Karen has a concern too about the sewage.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the waste management plant.
Please.
It's barely--
You have to put your mouth really close to it, I'm sorry.
It's barely doing the job now. And my concern is, 200, maybe, this is an estimate, 200 more people will be, I guess, using the plant or, so my concern is, how do they control the odor? And will odor be an issue? It's still an issue. And I'm wondering if it's just going to get worse. And that's a, you know, a concern for most of the people that live at Wells Manor, especially the ones closest to the plant facility.
Thank you.
So is this property, I mean, Wells Manor is right on the border of the village and the town. So some people tell me it's a village. I think I voted, as a voter, I'm in a village. But, and then other people say it's the town. So I just wanted to make sure that, if we could have more sidewalks, because it's going to be a lot more traffic. There already is a lot more traffic. So it would absolutely--
I think you're in the village on that side.
Yeah, so that, there is sidewalk on one end, but it stops at the woods. And it would be really great to have it go all the way, especially since there will be so much more traffic and it would be different use than to walk. A lot of our residents don't have cars, and that is how they get around. And there are no, there's no place else but the street or the, I mean, the road, the actual road where the cars are. It's a narrow road, it doesn't even have a dividing line on it. And so the cars are just, you know, barreling around, and we're trying to walk, you know. So that, that sidewalk would be really wonderful if that was extended.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
I just wanted a question. Down on Water Beach Street. Just from the last meeting, I do believe there is a walkway, a pedestrian path proposed from, maybe Ken could explain that, from Wells Manor over to the development out by the library. So I, you know what, I'm not here to speak. The question is, is there?
There's a gravel path proposed with possible future more connectivity with the village.
That's great. I just want to answer a couple more questions. If you recall, we met at the first, you reached out and I responded. And I, what we talked about was, prior to construction starting, this young lady will organize--
Ellen Crystal?
Yeah, as many tenants, and we will meet with them. I will come up, my construction team will come up, and we will exchange information, contact numbers and so forth, and we will have various points of contact. Your daily point of contact will be our guy in the trailer. However, my son and I own the construction company. We're not dealing with the contractors and what we're in. So we've done this before, we will meet with you, and we'll answer, you know, all concerns. Construction does cause some disruption, we know that. But we've done this, we built 100 units of senior housing next to 80 units of senior housing that we already owned, and it went pretty good. Couple people were happy about this or that, but, so we've done this before, and we hear you. As far as the question of the sewer, the village was gracious enough to entertain, providing water and sewer to us, and they took on a, or asked for escrow money to, they could do a report on the condition of the plant and the capacity. We've reached a financial agreement with the village for the water and sewer, and I believe one of the things that is going to be addressed in some of that financial is the concern that you raise about possible additional, I'm not well versed in sewer stream complaints, but additional methods to deal with the type of odor issues, okay? So it has to come up, but we will stress that again on this.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to sit down on that meeting with Wells Manor and ask the mayor, since you are in the village. But if Ken, Ken, this is beyond what's required by law, and he's saying he'll do it, and we're happy, so thank you, Ken. Would anybody else like to comment for the public hearing on workforce housing? Going once? Going twice? Gentlemen, would say we close the public comments?
Okay.
I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing on Wells Manor, I'm sorry, on, I can't remember, Astor Drive, I'm saying Wells Manor, it's the Locust, uh, Grove, Locust Hill. Locust Hill Workforce Housing. It feels like a Monday. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. We will be continuing with our seeker. We are still waiting for studies from Carnegie Construction, and we will keep the public informed as to going through seeker. And thank you all for attending, and your comments and your thoughts, and we're here to make sure this goes as smoothly as it can. We also have a public hearing open for an amendment to our short-term rental law. We passed a law, I think, six weeks, two months ago, and we are considering two amendments. One is to allow short-term rentals on ag, in agricultural properties, both, but they have to be in the ag district and have an ag exemption. For example, there are several farms in the area that are on many parcels, and the owners don't live on a parcel, or their primary residence is on one parcel, and a space that they could rent out as a short-term rental is on another parcel. So we have very few ag-exempt properties, and we want to support agriculture and events on agricultural properties. That's one change we're making. Another is, we have, I'm sorry, can we have one conversation here? Sorry. Thank you. The other amendment that we're considering is to, we have two instances, I believe, of people who, in effect, have an accessory dwelling to their home on a separate piece of property. So instead of making them go through a block line subdivision, we want to allow an accessory dwelling on a separate piece of property of budding someone's primary residence, and I wanted to propose a further amendment to this. I wanted to restrict the size of the accessory dwelling to anything below 1,000 or 1,100 square feet, whatever you guys think, so that it is an accessory dwelling, not someone who owns a six-bedroom home next door to them. And those are the two changes that we're considering to our current short-term rental law. So any comments, we'd love to hear. How do you guys think about the change of restricting the size of the additional dwelling of budding one's primary residence on a contiguous property? How do you feel about restricting it to 1,000 square feet? Or 1,100 square feet?
Yeah, I think you could, I could just put it firmly around.
Yeah, I agree.
If family couldn't--
If somebody needs an exception, we'll hear that.
The idea to this is to not, we don't want housing stock taken up by short-term rentals. This is an accessory dwelling, and the idea is maybe a family of five couldn't live in a 1,000-square-foot cottage? So these are cottages. It's to preserve housing stock for residents.
I would think that somewhere in the town law, accessory dwelling has a definition. So I would, I would just think that you'd want to use that same definition.
But it's not an accessory dwelling because it's on a separately deeded parcel. So by that definition, it's not, this is--
But you're calling it an accessory dwelling for the purposes, I'm not trying to be--
No, no, I'm following you.
You know, for the purposes of this short-term rental law, you're calling this second building an accessory dwelling.
I don't know that we called it that in the law. We didn't use the term. I used it here for clarity's sake.
All right.
We want to allow, I think, two instances of people who have, in effect, an accessory dwelling of budding their house, but it happens to be on a separately deeded piece of property. They own both pieces of property. Under the proposed law, they would not be able to rent it out. We want to allow them to rent it out because it's, it's not fit for a family to live in.
One thought, just one thought. I have no dog or despite, I don't know why I bring this up, but there is a part in the town law that has to do with apartments within houses, and there is a percentage, like, of the square footage, like one-third, you know, I think the apartment in the house can't be bigger than one-third of the square footage that a whole house is. I just have the thought of a way, instead of having, you know, a fixed number, that it could be relational to the, you know, the permanent resident's building as opposed to what the neighboring, you know, the other house accessory dwelling. Yeah, instead of having a fixed number, it might be a relational thing, because that would be consistent with the town law about apartments and houses.
Thank you. Put your thought on that, Warren.
I'll look at that section of the law that doesn't apply to this, but it might be another way of--
No, it doesn't apply directly. It's just, you know, it's just precedent for how the town has thought about how big something smaller can be in relationship to something larger.
I just read, I just read 12527, and I didn't see any reference to apartment sizes. There is--
I looked at this law several years, quite a good number of years ago, and so I could be wrong about it.
Village or town?
Um, you know, you're right, it was a village.
I don't think we, it's not in the town law, so--
Well, the purpose of this is not to have a ratio, the purpose of it is to restrict those buildings on other properties to smaller ones that aren't suitable for a family to live in, because we don't want to take buildings that are suitable off the market.
No, I understand completely, and I support what you're doing. I'm just saying that if it was a relational--
But it doesn't work if you have--
Then it might be more suitable, if you have a very large house, a very, very large house, the accessory dwelling may be, if it's connected at all to that house, may be larger than 1,100 feet.
But it's not connected, it's in a separate lot.
And we don't have that. I think you're confusing village law with town law, so--
It's okay, go ahead.
But a good idea.
If you like a hard and fast number, follow.
What our intention with short-term rental law was, to not have housing stock be unregulated hotels.
No, I have been reading, and I've been following, I understand the rationale. I just thought relational might be a better way to think about it, but--
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we keep this open for the revision?
Yeah.
Great, we'll come--
Are you talking about 1,000 or 1,100 square feet?
I'd like 1,000.
Okay. I'll make the amendment to the law, and then we'll post it on the town's website.
Thank you. So this, we're going to hold this open until our August, June, August what meeting? Trick question. August 12th at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay. We have-- Is there anything here we need Warren for? We're tabling our short-term rental law. We have the approval of town law roof contract.
Could you get my email about the contract, the town law roof? The attorneys for the contract have made a few changes, those changes were chunged with. So the way I drafted the resolution, that you approve the contract in the same or substantially similar form. So if you have no objection to the changes which I've sent to you redline for this afternoon, you can go ahead and pass the resolution, and approve the contract. We'd be few amendments that the contract--
Okay, yeah, I didn't, it came late this afternoon. We got it, we lost our, our web connection this afternoon, so I saw it on my phone, but I couldn't read it.
I don't think they'll have any strong objections.
Okay, do we need Warren for anything else? Okay, we'll pass that as is then, and then take your advice on it.
Okay. One thing I just wanted to comment on, going back to Locust Grove, Locust Hill. We did get a visual assessment study, a habitat study, and they're posted on the town website. I don't know if people have a chance to look at it, so if you haven't done so already, you can get that on the town website.
Thank you. Thanks, Warren. Frank Mazzarello is here to talk to us about two improvements to the park. Thank you for coming. Chauncey and I have been meeting with Frank. We've charged him with three, I guess four issues, but one is revising our parking lot. Good night, Warren, thank you. Down at the Thompson Baguette Park, I'm creating a turnaround. We're not talking about that tonight. The other is the shade seating area in front of the pickleball court. It's a big expanse of asphalt. We want to turn that into shade seating and a building that houses equipment for little league and soccer, and an expanse of lawn. And the third one is building out the pavilion kitchen for a concession stand. The fourth one is pocket park in Rhine Cliff, but we're not talking about that tonight either. So thanks for coming, Frank.
Okay, my name is Frank Mazzarello, I'm an architect. And Elizabeth said, I think we're suffering from a great success story at the park with all the visual people who were there now using the all-purpose field. So there is a general, a plan we're working on to kind of integrate the parking, fill in certain areas which were never finished, gravel areas, and also to make it safer with all the children, a lot of people crossing, trying to get across the road, people backing out. So that is something we will be working on. But what we started with, and what Chauncey and Elizabeth and I have been speaking about, was creating a shade structure in between the new pickleball court and tennis courts. Right now, that area has-- Oh, just, I promise I'll be watching plans next time, but--
Do we have, do we have this on the website, Julie? The plans?
Yes, they are.
They are, they are on the website.
Everybody, please feel free to look at them.
There is a PDF. So basically, the pickleball court is this rectangle here, and this tennis court is a large rectangle here. So the location of the shade structure is right here, right below the pickleball courts. So if you're standing, you're back to the existing parking lot, you'd be looking at the front of this shade structure. So what that does, and there was a concern of people waiting, playing the games, having a place to sit, and above all, being in the shade protected. We are trying to integrate also all the materials and the systems at the park for shavings, landscaping. So we thought, as a reference, the one pavilion down beyond the soccer fields, the gravel pavilion, using the kind of timber frame, simplifying things a bit, but it basically being just a sloping roof which allows people a place to sit underneath. We are trying to integrate some of the existing structures that are currently there.
We have two sort of random sheds owned by, we're not, who owns them? The town does, and that's used for storage for little leagues. So we want to build storage for the sports teams within the seating area. And create grass and gardens.
So right now-- What is currently an asphalt area that has gravel as well, we're creating a large lawn. Because there are so many people now using that all-purpose field, a lot of parents are waiting, they're with all their children, sometimes they're taking them to play basketball, sometimes they're in the, using the small playground there, but they're, and I have children myself, my daughter, you know, they go out just to hang out. It seems nice to have just a simple lawn where people can be waiting with some shade trees in front of that shade structure. So it's kind of an approach, a large, simple garden area where people can sit, you can keep a soccer ball around there as well. But currently, there are a few structures in that space, as Elizabeth says, for the little league, and the other one is a storage building, and one, I think, is a small concession stand. So what I tried to do was incorporate those to make, to allow, to kind of accommodate these other groups. So there is a portion which is enclosed for storage purchases, which is set back, so you'd be viewing an open column structure, and set back is an area. We considered a concession stand, but it seemed like it was becoming too much, kind of spreading out the different--
We already have a concession stand at the pool, and we want to build up the pavilion, so we don't want a third concession stand, we prefer storage.
So these are some elevations showing how the roof will be sloping towards the pickleball court, so it can be opening up. So it would kind of be opening up towards, meeting you and then sloping down. And a certain wood structural system with wood timbers, six-by-six timbers, exposed roof rafters. And this is a sketch of what you would be seeing from that lawn area with the exposed timbers and the storage structure set back. We talked about, you know, a little bit about materials, whether it's nice to have a permeable concrete paper underneath that shade structure, just for people to be able to sit on a chair there nicely. We didn't want to overload it with fixed seating to make it look like a bus station. It's more like an infole providing tube. I have three long benches in there that are 14 feet long, so it can hold a good amount of people. But without filling the space underneath, it also allows it to be more flexible. So potentially, that area underneath this roof, which measures about 52 by 25, approximately, six approximately, would just be able to be used for people, you know, bringing lawn chairs as well.
Did you say it wouldn't be a permeable surface or low lobby?
So, yeah, permeables, meaning they make great concrete pavers which have little knobs on them to allow the water to filter through. And those are the ones that have been used, and a portion of them used on the walkways on the Trailhead Pavilion as well. And we're still trying to make some decisions in terms of what, you know, the walkways would be like and all that curving and other materials. The other item has to do with the restroom pavilion, the Trailhead Pavilion, which the restrooms are obviously built out. But when we built that, we didn't have funding in place yet for the furnishings or equipment of the concession stand. What we did do was we brought in all the plumbing, all the electric, and it's in the walls, it's been stuffed out, ready to be connected. So we also have some lighting in there, but it's not enough lighting to run a kitchen. So I laid out a plan here, which was very similar to the one we had when we built the pavilion. And it includes a wash area. So there are certain health department codes that have to be complied with. You need a hand sink, a three-bay wash sink, and there has to be a rid sink. Those have to be separate items. Everything is stainless steel. And then there's kind of a cooking area, which is, basically what they do is they have a table, stainless table, and you buy cooking equipment which sits on top of that. So they're different units. It could be a griddle, it could be in the future a burner, or a hot dog roller, or a fryer. We haven't gotten into that yet, we're trying to provide the basics for this, but from, I've been talking to a company in New Jersey, they did give us pricing for some, for all of their fixed items.
What did it come out to, about $17,000?
It's about $16,400 or something like that.
For what items?
It's all spec'd out.
So they're. The entire show engine arm.
Yeah, I'll go through that now. So there's the three things I mentioned. One of the things has a large kind of work table adjacent to it. There's a table for the cooking area. There's a little food cart, there are storage shelving in there as well, a mop sink, a full height, 30-inch, six feet high, 30 inches wide freezer, and the same size refrigerator, and a table along the large, the serving window, service window. Currently, there's a long wooden shutter that rolls in front of that window. So a lot of people don't know if there's an actual opening in that. Pull that away, there's any kind of waste type area where you could go and, you know, request your food. It might be nice in the future to have sliding windows there as well. I did a read of research, I went to the one in Hyde Park. And sometimes with all the issue of insects coming in, it's good maybe to have that window closed when there's nobody using it or just avoid it when necessary. And it also helps in the winter in terms of mitigating the temperature difference between the interior and exterior, having that more kind of acclimatized space. The, so that's what this floor plan represents. In discussion with Chauncey and Elizabeth, we consider the need for storage. So what I did in, in kind of the design process, I considered putting a loft in there because you can see, this is gonna be a little hard for you to understand, but it's a very high space, so if this is the height of the space, we have room to add a little storage loft and purchase a prefabricated kind of spiral stair where you can, you know, all those cans, those sort of boxes and bottles of drinks or whatever would not be sitting around and you don't have a lot of space. A little loft like that, a lot of time used in market stalls and things like that. You can just kind of shoot up and have some shelving and additional storishments. So that's a revision I think we will be making. We've talked about also putting a fan cord, a little unit inside of the concession stand for heating and cooling purposes. Perhaps putting an outdoor condenser unit close to where the current electrical transformer is, which is kind of on the edge of the woods there. And moving it to feed into the interior fan cord unit. So that's where we're at so far. We got pricing from this company in New Jersey. It's very reasonable. Some of the local merchants, restaurants are using them, working with them here, which is why I went to them and they're, you know, seem much more economical.
Thanks, Frank. What do you guys think about the direction of this?
Yeah, no, this is very first step and we'll just keep moving.
We have a lot of money left over from certain capital projects and we want to expend it on, you know, the things that we feel people are using, which is the park. And we also looked at an area for bocce ball courts. It's not going to be 93 feet long, but I think we have 73 feet. So that will be on our funding list for next year. But we're looking at two bocce ball courts just, good night, thank you for coming.
Good night.
Just to the west of the basketball courts. Between the basketball courts and the sandlot where the volleyball is, we think we could fit in two nice sized piton, bocce, boule courts. So we looked at that too. I think this is great, Frank, so thank you. Please look at everything on the website. We'll be discussing financing and pricing it out. But we wanted to let the public know this is what we were thinking about and we'll be moving money around to do it and you'll come back with some numbers, yeah? Questions, comments from anybody? Yeah? I just want to also mention that we're working with Ashley, who is a gardening consultant with Studio Hope Land Ecological Garden Design and Consulting. She lives in Noelwood. She's a partner for Climate Action, writer and consultant, and also works with Suci for Dirty Gaia. She's an expert on pollinator and sustainable gardening. She worked at Brooklyn Botanic Gardens as a freelance consultant and wants to work with us on all this. We're looking at the pollinator garden we created between the pickleball court and the tennis court and also the rain garden along the corner of the pavilion. And unfortunately, there's a massive mudwork invasion. So we're going to have to tarp and smother for about a year to get rid of the mudwork and then do some public education and then replant. So that's sad but exciting. I think we can do something nice and we have to get rid of the mudwork. Frank is on board as our sort of creative eye oversight on everything, so we're moving ahead. Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. Okay, I'm gonna pick up with the rest of the meeting here. Resolution 2024-262, Alta Planning Revised for Feasibility, Study Scope and Fee. May I have a motion? Thanks, Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. I think we're still gonna table this because we're waiting for, good night, Manny, good night, John, good night, Ellen, we'll be in touch. Josette, thank you. We're waiting for a list of, of issues from Alta about why the price has changed and we want to look at it more thoroughly before we move ahead with this. So we'll table it until our next meeting. Is that okay?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, we're tabling tab five. Joni, that's being moved too, because we have a substantive change to that. I need a motion for 2024-269, Improving Town Hall Roof or Contract, or less. Good night, Frank, thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll take Alan and a second, Chauncey. Warren said to approve it as is and he would, he's happy with the changes.
Yeah, request the changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Tab seven, 2024-270, add-on for skate park, may I have a motion? Thanks, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. We wanted to approve the bowl but not approve the, the.
Sidewalk that goes to the, to the skate park that's gonna be built.
What's it called, the pump ramp or a pump?
It was a combination of pump ramp and a sidewalk and we're still deliberating how it's gonna lead to the site and where it's gonna come from as well as its.
One of our concerns is that skaters will then be skating right out of the parking lot to the skate park and we'd rather have the skaters in the skate park and maybe walking there. We're afraid if we build a pump track, it'll be, it'll be potentially dangerous for pedestrians. So we want to consider that before we approve it. But we do, it came in a lot lower than what we did, so we do want to consider adding the bowl if you guys are on board with that. So I'd like to move a motion to this resolution that we strike out including pump track, sidewalk or track for $31,250 and just keep an additional kidney-shaped bowl for $53,000. We will not approve the change order until we're happy with the visual.
Yes, and what do you submit?
Everybody okay with the proposed amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the resolution? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So Joni, we're only approving the $53,000. We will not sign the contract until we're happy with the. Good night, Bob, Matt, thanks for coming. We're losing everybody, I guess that means we're okay.
I don't know.
I hope so. I know. I need a motion for tab eight, 2024-271, PCA upgrade.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad, any comments or, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for tab nine, 2024-272, to approve the purchase of an electric vehicle for the building department.
Motion.
May I have?
Second.
Thanks, that's Chauncey, who is that, Chauncey and Chad? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're still working on the, we don't have this according to procurement, but once we do, this is approved.
Frank, I believe that it states what vehicle in that resolution, so I don't know which one would.
No, I don't, because I talked to Emma and if we amend the vehicle, we have to go back through a whole contract process with NYSERDA. So I would rather find the Kona than deal with NYSERDA.
Does it specify a year though in the resolution? Because I believe Emma said it could be a '24.
Can we move, just, can we, can we amend the resolution just to strike out the year and say that Hyundai, Hyundai Kona, and then that'll give us more latitude with what we can.
Motion.
Will that, will that work, Jon?
Sure.
Okay, motion to just strike out 2023 and leave it as the Hyundai Kona. Everybody okay with that? Everybody approve their amendment? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everybody approve the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, thank you. Tab 10, 2024-273, Higher Temporary Court Time Clerk, Will, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Motion to appoint Tony Avigan, is that correct? To the Conservation Advisory Board.
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. Alan, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And thank you for volunteering, Tony, it's much appreciated. We're actually getting people on Conservation Advisory Board. We almost have, I think we have a forum now, so thank you. I need a motion for 2024-275, Repairing the Sidesteps at Town Hall.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2024-276, Elected Official Standard Workday, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks. Chauncey, may I have a second? Thanks, Alan, any comments, questions, all in favor?
Why are we all in the middle of a conversation?
You're not in the retirement system.
You're retired.
Chad, join the retirement system.
I'm getting old.
You can join too.
No, thanks. I don't think I understood what's happening.
Yeah, no, it's only to report your hours for retirement, for the New York State pension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Joan, thank you for wrangling this and figuring it out. Well done, deputy dog. Passes unanimously. 2024-277, Nine-Foot LED Streetlight Contract, Chauncey, I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Thanks, Chauncey, may I have a second? Thanks, Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Chauncey, again, thank you for wrangling this, gets more and more complicated. I will ask, I'm gonna bundle all of these recreation items under one motion. 2024-278, for town employee passes. 2024-279, for the Rhineback, Rhineback Band Concert at the Recreation Park. 2024-280, for the Rhineback, Rhineback Exchange Student Pool passes. 2024-281, for Aqua Zumba Programs at the Rec Park. 2024-282, for Movies Under the Stars at the Rec Park. 2024-283, for the Correction of Pay Rate for Recreation Staff. 2024, for a refund of a recreation program payment. 2024-285, for Recreation Hire Assistant Swim Coach, I think it's Blue Bell Questin. 2024-286, for Extended Hours for Concession Stand. May I have a motion and a second? For all of those bundled together, I'll take Alan.
Second.
And Chad. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. I will make a motion for the three financial, what are they called? Resolutions, thank you. 2024-287, for preliminary accounts payable abstracts. 2024-288, for our capital projects abstracts. And 2024-289, for our budget transfers and amendments, may I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I mentioned Ashley Gamel at Studio Hope Land and I do want to pay her as a consultant to advise with us. So I'll be coming up with a proposal for you. It's, you know, a very low hourly rate, she's an expert, a resident, and is very excited about this. So I hope you'll support that. Was there anything? Was there anything else I wanted to talk about?
290, the, the water fountain.
Oh, geez, okay, we have, that's it, is that a new amendment?
Yeah, that's something I wanted to raise.
The new...
2024, uh, 290 for the, um, for the water fountain in the children's playground. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks Chad, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Chaunce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. It's, we don't have a working water fountain in the kids', the children's playground. Chad wrestled one, found one, just like we have in, across the parking lot from the field, except it doesn't have the dog bowls, so it's a lot less expensive. And since dogs don't go in there, we're covered. So thanks for doing it, Chad. Um, mudwork, I've covered. I think we're good, anything else? Any comments or questions for anyone in the audience? Concerns? Riddles? Jokes? Not you Bill? We're not signaling you out or anything. Um, hearing nothing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, we'll see you in August. Goodnight.